Call this council meeting to order, March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, City Hall. Are there any additions to the agenda? We got under new business intern renewal from Ag three sixty. There's nothing else. Motion.
Second.
Got a motion in second, all in favor. Passes four now. Citizens comments? None. Consent agenda approved minutes, regular council meeting, March second, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Second. Motion in second, all in favor. Motion carries four. Appropriation ordinance three sixteen, twenty twenty-one, and the amount of twenty-one thousand, three ninety-seven, and eighty-one cents.
So moved. Second.
Motion in second, all in favor. Motion carries. Department head, electric department, Jeff?
Oh, not really a lot, just in between the weather stuff. We've changed the pole and done some other stuff, but we're working in the plant quite a bit. I got a call yesterday from Cliff Gamblin from Caterpillar, and it looks like if everything goes right, they want to have the engine in the plant by the end of May. So it's a little faster than we thought maybe it would be. I haven't heard the last word from mid-stage yet, but it looks like from the plumbing end and that stuff, that cat wants to get going on that other end, something to do with the contractor that got already's got other stuff that he wants to get done, so we could see some action down there for a while. Ever since that we rebuilt that big compressor, we've never been able to make it get online and run with that twenty-horse motor. It pulls so hard starting that we just couldn't get it going, and we finally realized that the wire coming from the main box on the north wall going across the ceiling and coming down in there is too small. So I had Mike from B and S down there today, and it's all in conduit tray instead of being in pipe. And so if the council doesn't object, I'm gonna have them help me get number two wire across that ceiling and back down in there so that we can get it going as soon as they can get away to do it. But we just been cleaning up some stuff around the plant, and that's about the extent of it, so anyway. The starting average is just so much on that big motor that we just can't get it to rough. It's been a hair pulling experience, I'll tell you to say the least. Oh, I do have the, I do have the primary conduit ordered for the truck parking. The conduit's in at Stanya's, the elbows and stuff aren't in yet, but as soon as that comes, I'm planning on starting to rough in that, that stuff out there. The only thing I do ask is that we put some protection around the pedestals when we set them, because they set out away from where the dolly drop is, so they're kind of just fair game out in the open. I've called some places about some four and a half inch pipe to stick on there, but the cost is pretty high. So I've come to the conclusion if we take, buy an old irrigation system and use that galvanized pipe and then cement it on the inside now, we could buy it for scrap price and just cut it into lengths that we want it buried in there. It'll be galvanized, it won't rot, you know, and it'll be, they won't want to put it high enough that those trucks, you can see over the hood and see that pipe, because the one on the right, with the way that the truck parking is designed, two trucks park in there side by side. On one side, the pedestals on the left, on the driver's side, but the other one's on the rider's side. And unless you could see it across the hood, I just think they're fair game to get hit if we don't protect them that way. We'll have some additional cost in some concrete and some pipe, but I don't think it'll be so much that, you know, if we hit one of them pedestals, we're cut out because it, those boxes are gonna be daisy chained together. So if you smoke one out, you know, we're still, I called Greg today to see about what the delivery time is on those pedestals. We were though about six weeks ago, so hopefully they'll be coming in in the next couple of weeks and get started on that deal. We'll have the transformer set up and stuff where when it comes in, it'll be ready to set, so that's kind of where we're at at this point. Then we'll be up and out of everybody's way, and he's gonna, we're gonna visit tomorrow about the lights, where we think we ought to position the lights in there and see if we can get everything roughed in for that too. So anyway, that's kind of where we're at.
I'd like to see, I don't know, you guys pipes on each end of those culverts, kind of like we did a hamper? Cause that, how wide, how wide are those, those?
That's Jason's deal, they're forty feet.
And that's what we did a hamper, isn't it?
Yeah, but there, they'll be in the road. On the outside, they'll be in the road, see if, if amples are not, so.
I don't know, I just, I'd like to see poles put there and paint it nice and bright color.
I almost think we need to put another forty on each end of each one and double them and make them longer.
They look, they look pretty narrow to me, down that narrow road.
That's why I said.
That's what I said to Jason.
And we just let, and that wouldn't be, I mean, surely we can tie those together, can't we?
Yeah.
I mean, that wouldn't be a, I just think we should maybe, I could be wrong.
Is that something you can splice together, Jason? Yeah, okay.
I don't know if that's an idea.
Yeah, I mean, that's why I said that, cause it is wide enough for a good driver to get in there, but not everybody's a good driver.
Well, there's a big difference in, I mean, just different, everybody's gonna be driving some different.
Yeah. Well, something, I think, it's just, they're gonna get crushed pretty quick the way they are now.
Jeff, you got anything else?
That's it.
Any questions for Jeff?
We need to give approval or just, you just need our blessing for that?
Yeah, it's gonna, it'll be a couple thousand dollars to do it, you know? I mean, there's a hundred and, by the time you go up the wall and across and back down, about a hundred and thirty feet. So there'll be a half a roll, and I know, and number two's not cheap, you know? And then I'll have half a day's labor or so to do it, so it might be twenty-five hundred dollars by the time we get done. It'll be over what I can normally spend, but I can't, I can't say for sure, cause I don't know what the cost, what is the cost of number two, right?
Yeah, it's probably gonna be around two thousand dollars completed.
Yeah, I'm gonna guess it'll be close. But it'll also, it'll also put enough in that box now that when they, when they do that cat, that box is right there where they can do their, their day tank and the other stuff out of it, so it's gonna, and the whole plant's really under wired. It's just scary, you know, it was done in the, in the early nineteen hundreds or nineteen twenties, and wire's pretty light, so anyway.
You're asking the tire guy another? What? Something we gotta have.
Yeah.
I mean, I may have to come back for final approval, I'm sure it'll be a couple thousand dollars to do it.
We can just do, like, a motion to allow the project, and then once we get the bill in, we could, cause we'll have to do the, the business name and the amount anyways, so.
Just a motion to allow them to go ahead and get it fixed?
They could probably give you a pretty good price on that, couldn't they, Jeff? Pretty good idea, I mean.
Well, Mike said he wasn't for sure until he got back to the shop, but yeah, I think they could probably tell we're pretty close. I hate to wait two more weeks if I can get it done.
It'll be like three weeks.
Yeah. This is one of those special months.
Yeah.
So you got to do a motion, move forward to our Jeff to proceed with rewiring of the new compressor?
Is that a motion?
Yeah.
Got a motion, maybe a second?
Okay.
Motion in second, any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
I did have one more thing, and I don't, and I'll bring it to you next meeting, but we got to looking in there and thinking, we really don't have a, a safety door to get out of that plant inside the building itself. If something should happen and we catch on fire or something, you know? The only door that we do have is clear on the west end behind the Cooper. And I wanna, I talked to a guy at Quality Glass the other day, I talked to Trent Slay first about putting a door in in one of those windows on the south wall, and he said that he talked to Quality about several jobs that he'd done, and they can build a door to fit in there and leave most of the glass in or replace the glass so we'd have light in there. And I don't, I don't have any idea what it's gonna cost, the guy's gonna give me an estimate, but, and put a panic bar on it so we could get out of the main building. The only other way we can get out is in the office if something should happen, so. And, and you can, you can take it or you can leave it, but I thought I'd bring a price to you, and we can discuss. Those old steel windows, it wouldn't hurt to get them out there anyway. I mean, they're gonna use part of them to get the pipe in and the exhaust out, and so if we can put a door in there, it just, it might be something that, it might make the insurance happy, and it might make us happy too, so. But I'll have something next time for it, so.
Jason, water department?
Say again?
Water department?
Uh, just thought about the pool, I put, I got that concrete bit out for you guys with the new pricing on there. And that's the new with four inch. I was just updating that for you. And then as far as the wastewater, we're just trying to get some lines cleaned, trying to get that, get that finished out. That's what we've been working on, is mainly sewer line, clean them.
You guys find some spots that need cleaned or pretty, pretty good areas, yeah?
Yeah, it's, it's a pretty black anyway. But yeah, it's, it's worth the trouble.
You can definitely tell the areas of concern, like, we've had issues with certain parts of the sewer, I wanna say just cleaned within the last three months, and they went up and were doing the routine maintenance, and it was back to being clogged and disgusting. So I think if it continues, we might have to have a conversation with the people, cause you can tell where it's coming from, so. It's interesting that what's, what the sewage can speak for, for the area.
I'll do, I'll make a motion for Jason to spend two thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty-nine cents on the concrete slab project to some pool.
Second.
Got a motion in second, any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries five oh. Anybody got any questions for Jason on the water department? Streets and parks, Jason?
I sent some stuff to Phil, he has it got back with me on the oil, and what he's gonna do for the, what it's gonna cost for him to do it either, so I'm just waiting on that to get back to you guys on that part of it. Chat, hopefully I hear pretty soon, he'll start bringing that chat in from Wichita. That's about it on the streets so far of getting, getting stuff, getting stuff done. I'm just trying to get the sewer stuff cleaned so we can get to milling some streets.
Jason, are you guys gonna patch that pretty quick between nutting and west on First Street? It's kind of getting bad. There's some rock there.
Nutting and west?
Oh, it's where I got sewer in.
I mean, it's starting to get kind of.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
I don't know if I'm being picky, it just, it seems like it's getting pretty bad now. I don't know if you have.
Oh, it's one in front of the, I got it.
Take it out, take it out.
Yeah, we need to go add some more rock in there just for a meantime until, so we can get the, I really don't want to do much right now until that sun is baking down on that asphalt, so it'll lay out a lot nicer and pack down.
Just the holes are getting.
We could, we could get up there, we can get up there here tomorrow, the next, next, or the next day, and then put some rock down or something, and just at least get it smoothed out for a little bit.
We start to set a little bit of water?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, probably.
That's a huge hole.
Anything else for Jason? Jason, you have anything else?
No, that's it for now.
Okay. Police department, Tori? Any questions for Tori? Fire department?
Nothing.
Jamie?
I am just requesting that write-off amount we have. Oh, gosh. Um, thirteen accounts and a total of thirteen thousand, three hundred and two dollars and four cents. These are accounts that they've come back, and people have either been deceased, they're uncollectible. We've had some bankruptcy filed, things of that nature. And then also some of them were so old that when we did collect the amount that we could, some of that, when we changed it, we made it where the customers would pay for the fees. But the ones that are old enough, the fees when the bill was acquired wasn't as much as the new fee is. So some of that is, is the larger fee now, but we're, we're clearing up some of these accounts, so it's, it's working, and they're getting people's attention, so.
So none of those are anybody that, or any current users or?
Correct.
Anybody that has anything of any type of anything in their name?
Well, kind of, but no. None that I can do anything on it.
So this is something we'll never collect on?
Well, yeah, like the large one, I have one that's over nine, sorry, nine thousand dollars, and that's bankruptcy. One we had no information on, and they're not even in town anymore, like the thousands of dollars ones. And then I know our other really high one that we had from whatever happened years ago. I just looked on, when I was going through everything, I think that they even got like, it might have been like a thirty or fifty dollar payment, but that's at least getting paid now, or a payment, but I think that's the last of the, the really large accounts from back in what, two thousand, whatever? Cause the, the other one, we got the one paid off last year, I think.
Are they current bankruptcy filings, like recent bankruptcy files?
The one is, I think.
Open bankruptcy case?
Yeah.
Do you know what kind of bankruptcy?
No, they just came back and told me that they were filing bankruptcy.
It might be something you can, depending on how they file, you might be able to file a claim in bankruptcy, and I can show you how to do it.
Okay.
It's not any big deal.
Yeah.
Same with, with an estate, somebody dies, you can file a quick claim in the estate, and, and as a government entity, you should be looked at.
Oh. We'll talk about that tomorrow.
Do we need to look at that before we write them off?
And that, I mean, that's gonna apply probably to municipal court fines too. Especially if it's nine thousand dollars. It's chapter seven, it's a lost cause.
It's chapter seven.
Okay, nevermind. Which is gonna be discharged?
Uh, the other, like, the one I know that has passed away is a hundred dollars, so I don't know. And I think that there's another one, I think she's passed away, and it's two hundred dollars, so. I mean, if you want me to try to do that, I can, but.
There's one large one that's under bankruptcy.
And it's section seven.
Chapter seven.
Chapter seven.
Yeah, spending your wills on that one.
Yeah. There's an evil nine thousand dollars.
Well, yeah, so.
I'm not certain that's the amount of here.
This one dates way back before I even got on council.
Yeah, there was something that happened, and there was, what, ten accounts?
Yeah, I mean, I kind of paid them and all that stuff.
Even when I started, there were several that had over five thousand dollars. It was just, yeah, just kind of an abuse of, of the payment agreements, and we've gotten those knocked down, and people get shut off, so.
If we write someone off and they come back and want to set up utilities again, are they, it's really not allowed to do that, or?
You could keep track.
Yeah, but I don't know if we can.
You can't collect against them, it's another point, you just want to move it off your books.
Yeah, yeah, so if they came in, like, we look at everything, and if they came in and I saw that.
But they had some written offs and they're either.
But it's still, yeah, like, we'd still be able to search their name and then, like, go into their log. And then if they did come in and make the payment, we can still make that.
If they made the payment, then we'd turn utilities on for them, but if they did not, or can we tell them no?
Depends if it was discharge and bankruptcy, you wouldn't be able to, but I mean, you could, you could also demand, and I don't know what the ordinance will say, did they pay a deposit?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep, it's a deposit now, it's, no, it's not a deposit, it's a connection fee now.
Two hundred and fifty dollars.
Correct, non-refundable.
Non-refundable.
No.
We're done away with the deposit.
But that's how people, that's what people do, they, even if they were, if they had, like, if I had a large bill and I wanted to get utilities on, I'd make Travis come in and put his name on it, that's how they're getting. We tried to remind them that we're aware of it, but unfortunately, I can't do too much.
Yeah, it's a big problem with tenants, when the old tenant doesn't pay, the new tenant moves in, that's the problem.
So thirteen, three oh two oh four?
Mm-hmm.
So that kind of gets cleared up from the larger upstairs?
Yeah, I mean, there, we still have, I think we're at like forty thousand still, but there's several, I think there was seventeen accounts that were in, um. Well, there's more than that, but they, like, there's different ones in different sections of what they're going through, and a lot of them got served, I mean, they got served papers, so they're going through, through the court too, so. I mean, they're.
Should be able to take some ten years money.
Well, right? We've, we've been seeing quite a few things, so.
Creditors can do it, it's not credit.
Do you have a, like, a list of what we've recovered through this collections, I mean?
Yeah, I have it on a spreadsheet I can send to you guys tomorrow.
I'd be interested to see it sometime, just to see what we've collected through, going through collections, just, yeah.
Yep, I can send you guys that.
So do we have a motion to write that off?
I make a motion to write off thirteen thousand, three hundred and two dollars, four cents worth of old accounts. Second?
Got a motion in a second, any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries five oh. Anything else, Jamie?
Um, the next couple days, I will be participating in the CCMFOA conference, that's just the clerk stuff. It's all awesome and virtual, so I'll be in and out of the office. Sometimes it's easier to pay attention when the door's not opening, but bills were due already, so it's not, not too big of a deal, but I'll be in and out. That's it.
Any questions for Jamie?
We haven't got anything from Midwest.
So we did get our bill, we got a pretty good credit on our bill. I tried to get ahold of Greg before the meeting so I could get a little bit more information for tonight's meeting, but he wasn't available and didn't get me called back. I mean, we had a credit, so I think it's gonna look a lot better than people are worried about, but we'll still be submitting our fuel costs, and I need to talk to him about, like, the, I mean, the hours of, of labor and, and stuff like that, so.
He wants our hours of generation stuff, I talked to him on the phone this morning.
So.
So I'm gonna try and get it put together and get sent to him yet this week.
So basically, he does the math for how much we're gonna need to sell it for the kilowatt, right?
Well, what he does is, he, he takes the generation cost into, compared to what the cost was at that given hour through all of this, because some of them, there's been quite some deductions, more so than what he thought it was gonna be, so he'll have a little better idea next time about what we've done, but it'll be substantial, so.
Does this bill reflect the whole time we generated?
Yes.
Yes.
So, and, I mean, we'll find out before the next meeting, and I'll send an email to update you guys. I just was hoping to have something tonight, and it didn't work out.
That's part of the reason too for the updated, the plan for a meter that, that goes directly to Midwest that they can see also. So when they do that, we won't have to go through this, cause we read them hourly the way it is, but they'll log them that way should this ever happen again, then we'll know exactly, so.
Yeah, cause we got an updated invoice today from Midwest Energy, so.
So is it double our bill?
Uh-uh, we have a credit for next month, like, we're, we have, our bill was.
You didn't use the, you didn't use the dirt threshold that usually they're.
So basically, we're just gonna have our, our generation cost is the only increase that citizens are gonna see?
Correct.
We don't have a tremendous bill coming from Midwest Energy.
Correct, it's not gonna be outrageous like everyone expected.
As long as we didn't have to pay thirty or forty cents a kilowatt hour, I'm, I'm okay with that.
I just don't want to say the, like, until I talk to Greg, I don't want to say too much or say the wrong thing, cause I don't want. But I, I don't think that it's gonna be, all of my emails from Midwest Energy have been, this isn't as bad as we thought it was gonna be, we're seeing pretty good numbers, especially those of us that have that contract, so I think we'll be good, but I'll definitely send that out once I get confirmation.
Anything else for Jamie? John? Anybody got any questions for John? Old business?
Um, on the, what was it, six fifty-one and the eight oh eight North Broadway? Or no, six forty-seven, which one is that?
It's eight oh eight, it's eight oh eight, I heard.
Yeah, the eight oh eight North Broadway, you put them the one off this street.
Be the six forty-seven?
Yeah. The motion was a little ambiguous last time.
Ambiguous?
She asked me what it was, and I couldn't tell her from my notes what the motion was.
A motion to give them, I think, sixty days to tear it down?
Yeah, but there's a second part to it.
Six forty-seven, cause, well, cause we said that we would tear it, or they had thirty days, or the city would move forward, so. I just want it, I just want it in full understanding and emotion that this is what is happening. Where do you take it?
So are we gonna have to go in and clean the properties up, clean everything out of the houses?
Are these the ones that are, there was only one that I thought was concerning, and that was the Dill one, and that he went, his eventually went out for the rest right now, so.
I don't even think that one's on the list. That's not even.
No, it's not, but that was the only one out of all those I was really concerned about, so.
Well, so we will probably have to clean them up, yes, according to.
But I think it's, what I'm saying is, I think we're talking about, in the Dill property, it looked like personal property that somebody was storing, the rest, I think.
We haven't meant to be still.
I cleaned out Fourth Street, so you guys are fair game to volunteer your time.
So do we need to get a court order to go into these houses to look at that? We've already deemed them unlivable, and they've kind of agreed with it.
I didn't.
Which ones, I don't.
Would be different from these properties.
Yeah, I would have the other ones.
Well, these two properties, they said they were gonna clean them out and move all their personal belongings out and get them put in storage.
I have to go back and through, through the pictures.
You told me the other, like, I went through the other ones.
Yeah, the only one that I had concerns with, we did what we needed to do. So unless they've moved stuff in, but what were they cleaning out?
That you have stuff stored there.
They have stuff stored there. Thirty years of junk, thirty years of property.
Okay, so the motion last time was sixty days and then we're gonna move forward, but wasn't there a second part to that motion? You said it might.
Yeah, it was the, it was the, until the March second meeting, or the city would move forward.
Okay, so they had sixty days until the March second meeting. Have we had any contact with them? Did they receive?
I got that one email, I think, that I told you guys about from Ron.
Okay, let's do this, let's just, can we put in the mode, in the next, the, the council's directing you to tell them that their deadline is March second. And then you can put that in the minutes and send them a copy.
It's March sixteen.
Whatever, March sixteen, whatever the sixty days is.
It's already passed.
What was?
What's which passed the sixty days? They've already been notified, had sixty days, no progress has been made.
So I thought the sixty days was from the last meeting.
No, that was back in January.
Back in January.
Yeah, I sent everything.
And they didn't show up is when, when we made the motion for sixty days and the city was moving forward.
And they've been notified that the sixty days is up and we're gonna move forward, but they still have personal property in the houses. We're, we think.
They've got something in them.
Yeah, well, we're sure they're not empty. So what's our next step on?
And I mean, what we could do is we can get a letter together stating that the date is passed. And they are officially on the list, because.
Yeah, so I say, can we just set a date that the city plans on doing something and let them know that this is the day the city's going in?
Well, 'cause my, like, I've been trying to keep in contact with the volunteer group and they're. Supposed to have done something.
The fact of the matter is, the city wants to do as little as possible cleaning that stuff out. The more they can do, it'll, and lots of city has to deal with it. So maybe we just say, this is the date the city's crew is going in to. Remove the structure, the offending structure. And let them know. If they wanna attempt to get an injunction to really through the district court, they can do so by that point. Maybe talk with the group and come up with the date.
Been, been longer than that?
Well.
Nope.
No.
No?
No. Fourth Street's still cleared out. Chad and, uh, Bobby are just a little bit more busy than I think they can.
That's it, right.
Yeah. But I do want notified before, 'cause I'm gonna go to jail soon, so. Cross the street and watch it.
I just wanna make sure it's law legal, John, whatever you need to do, to me, it just needs to be legal.
You've done, we've done everything that you were supposed to do. I mean, i- i- if they're supposed to be making progress, they're not making progress. My only concern is a box of grandma's heirlooms tucked underneath a bunch of junk.
Well, that's what I think sent some of this, one of these houses.
But also, that's their two and three time, thirty days, sixty days, you're on the list warning, I mean. We're, we're six months, six months in from telling them to.
But also, North Broadway is over four years, because next month, I've been working here four years and they were notified.
Right.
Of stuff way before I worked here.
And there's documentation of all.
He can take pictures when he takes stuff out. No judge is gonna say there's anything.
Yeah, I mean, and if there is s- s- personal property, what needs to be done, it needs to be, it'll have to put in the storage. My concern is, then you're talking about, say, staff spending time doing it. And so the more, if they get a drop down date and, and they're required to go in there and do that, then, well, you're right. Walk through it, pick out eligible.
So do we, do we pick a date and send them a certified letter knowing that they received it, that on this date that house is coming down? And if your stuff's not out of it, it goes with it?
And like I said, they need to get in the joint, and I've had to do that before, and if, if they need a judge to, to haul everybody in court and, and judge can order the date, then really the city's really protected.
The judge can say, you know, you gotta tell this point, otherwise the city's free and clean, do whatever they want.
So do we just need to pick a date then? Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying, but certified and regular mail, so you know they.
They just get one. A lot of times they won't do anything with certified mail.
So what did you guys want?
It's when the volunteers can do it, isn't it? I mean, basically, it's after that date.
You guys know, you need a date that it's coming down.
Oh, coming down, not clean down.
Just give them enough time to get the certified letter.
I don't think I can get them cleaned up in that amount of time.
Well, I understand that. Set the deadline before you're gonna tear it down. You never know when you're gonna tear it down.
What kind of piece, like, what piece of machinery do we need? 'Cause I could.
No, you can't.
I could learn. I'm not, not above learning.
It's not learning with a hundred and seventy thousand dollar loader though.
So it's a loader that I need, huh?
I don't know.
Why don't you just make it easier and just say April one or something?
Is that too soon?
If we say April one and then we don't tear it down till June one, for some reason, is there, does that matter? Or do you have to, if you set a date that it's coming down?
I, I don't think it matters. I mean, I don't know if these people are local, but they're gonna be, if they're local, they drive by the house every day and they go, oh, I got one more day. Oh, I've got one more day, or they don't start it.
Well, no, like, on the other houses, we've basically just told them that they are on a list and they're coming down in the order of that list.
Yeah, what's, what's different from the other houses?
Can't you just tell them April one, it's gonna be scheduled to be taken down?
Just, just pick the date and I, Jamie and I will drop the look.
April first.
It's, it's going to say that it's scheduled to be taken down at this time. Do you believe all personal property that you intend to keep it and remove and the rest of the stuff has no value?
And then after that date, I mean, it's a free game.
Then after that date, it's a free game.
I'm good with that.
Can we, can we get a motion just so we get it in the minutes?
What date do you wanna? Do you want April first?
I guess I'm bottom line, realistically, if they really need some.
I just don't want to see different than any other property.
You don't, you don't see it coming down.
The only difference is the profit, they've come in and they've made progress, so it's just showing that we have been working with them too.
Is that a motion?
Second.
Yeah. Have a motion in a second that the properties at eight oh eight North Broadway. And six forty-seven East Fifth will be tore down on April first. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries five oh. Anything else on old business?
Truck parking, um, I just think we need to lengthen those culverts if we can. And then there is one little low spot, if we, if we talk to Chad, there's one spot holding the water. Which it just settled from the rain.
Do you think that, and Jason, I don't know, can we make any more of that water go to the east? Off that east culvert, 'cause it, it looked, it looked like all, a lot of the water was just staying between the two culverts. I didn't know if we can dig any deeper and try to get that to flow east a little bit to the big ditch.
Yeah, we could probably move some. We can move some more if we had to.
The ditch really isn't deep enough. We're deeper than what the ditch even is, so the highway is basically the problem, right?
Yeah, see, that, well, that'd be nice if I could sit there and get the state to come in and put a culvert from there. Across that little road that goes to that shop over there, you know? And then we could sit there and put a culvert underneath there and then we could get rid of a lot of it, 'cause we could, we could put it this much deeper down there, but it's just still gonna be a hole.
Across that.
And the ditch isn't deep enough on the highway, right?
Well, I think the ditch is deep enough, but there's that turnoff going into that field right off the highway.
Yes.
Into Fisher's Field. You're only gonna get water to go that far and it ain't gonna go any further.
Yeah, yeah, but.
And that's the state's right of way right there?
Yes.
I don't know, I just, I don't know if we went on, of course, if we put another forty foot on them, it ain't gonna matter.
Or, or another twenty, I don't care, I just think we need to widen them out a little, make it easy. And then just a little dirt in that low spot where it's settled and it looks good. What is it? Do we get transit? Are we, what is the grade there? It's, it's just dead level there?
No, I, it's just, yeah, pretty much. That's where, that's where the water has always stood there, so I, that's just where it's been. And I didn't try to divert it any which way, I just, I just pulled the ditches as they were, I didn't shoot them or nothing.
Yeah. The rock will slow it down some. But it's gonna get more packed, so the rock will slow it down some. I don't think it's a problem necessarily, but it's, I guess, if it rains six or seven inches, but everything's gonna be a problem there if it doesn't have much.
But you said, what are you suggesting then, Ross, I mean, being a driver as far as the.
Oh, I just think we, I just think we widen it out, widen out the drives.
Yeah.
That road's not, that road's not any too wide to begin with, and then you don't wanna crowd over and get over on the edge, you just, we just need them a little bigger, a little wider. Looks good. Just need to be a little wider.
You want, what, you want him to quote two then, two twenties?
Doesn't matter, that's fine. I mean, that's, I, I don't think they have to be, I don't think they have to be eighty feet, they don't need to be that, but if we put twenty more on each one, or I don't know how those. Is that, those are one forty, those are.
I just say, I have them cutting to twenty.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So I can haul them.
No better time to do it now, you know?
Stick twenty on each one and we'll be fine. Yep.
Sounds good.
Anything else? Nothing else on old business, we'll move to new business, bulk water project.
So Jason applied to the state for, is it well number?
Two.
Two, um, back last year, um, to be able to take some of those water rights. And we are looking at putting in, like, a bulk water station where it would be more of like a card reader. Like, right now, it's basically the honor system and there's a piece of paper out there and if you go get water, you write down your amount of water. Um, I've been looking at the water loss reports and they are getting better, but it's still not great. Um, so obviously, it for sure needs a meter on it, but having that system would allow us to be able to. Keep better track of who's coming in and getting it and being able to bill it correctly and. Um, and have all of that ready and, and just kind of updated and. Um, the system is about twelve thousand dollars and then we are waiting to hear back from Rosencrantz Bemis. Um, for the, the amount that it would cost for the, the conversion on the well that we would need. 'Cause they'd have to take everything out and put the well back in, so. Um, we just kind of wanted to bring it up and see, uh, if that's something you guys would be interested in. Um, I mean, if not, we can.
And this is on the well down at the plant?
Yes, like where you get the bulk water out.
On the nitrate well that we don't use for anything else?
It would not be selling the treated water, correct? It, it comes straight, and that's the change out, so it would come straight from the well, not.
'Cause right now, we sell treated water, right?
Yes.
It's definitely, um, a step in upgrading and just. Getting up with the speed of times and, I mean, we sell it, people, I mean, people use it pretty regular, regularly. Ourselves, obviously, were up when they were doing the roundabout project, but we don't get those too often, but.
I'd be interested in seeing what the whole thing costs.
So. Jason, by next meeting, we should hear back from them, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And I guess the transfer's approved then, or?
Yeah, everything's approved from the state, so we just have to get it going.
What'd you, what'd you find out about that money after the comments?
Nothing. No one knew anything.
Nobody knew anything?
No, and I wasn't getting some of my emails and I just finally started getting them today. So I was missing a week's worth of emails.
And I don't know anything about the, the rules or regulations that guide this, but there were. Cities are gonna get something from the last stimulus bill, and I think there's a, kind of a mad dash to figure out what everybody's getting. And rumor was, it's not gonna have any stipulations.
The last bill that they signed Thursday.
Apparently, people took, there's no information available to.
So if we get money, there's no stipulations on what we use it?
The, uh, there was an article out of Great Bend that listed several cities and it said, like, Greensburg was getting a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Assuming population, now that's a significant chunk of change then that should be coming to St. John.
Yeah, 'cause we're very similar in population with Greensburg, so.
We were just trying to dig up some information and we just weren't.
Yeah, 'cause I got ahold of Greensburg and they acted like they didn't know anything about it, so.
Plus the newspapers, you know?
They don't ever miss print.
Uh, insurance renewal. There's the new through Ag three sixty.
And that's gonna be for the full year, our last, our last, um. Cycle was July through April and the cost was about sixty-six thousand, I believe.
That renews April one? You said it's worth that much?
Well, I don't know, 'cause we didn't have a full year, but I know when he quoted, when he put in, when he submitted the proposal, it was. Around the ninety thousand, not quite ninety thousand dollars. And we haven't had any claims, we've just had a lot of changes and. I know Alan's vehicle got hit with ice and it. They, they actually submitted it to the other person's insurance and they paid it, so. Took off one of his side hairs.
Did Farm Bureau, did you ever check the Farm Bureau in town?
No.
No.
'Cause I mean, for me commercially, Farm Bureau's significantly cheaper than Trave was. He's pretty competitive with everything else.
If you take that for twelve months, it's about seventy-six hundred dollars a month. And our last one was about seventy-three hundred, so there's about three hundred dollars difference. In timeframe anyway, the sixty-six thousand for the. For however many months we had. So it's pretty close.
I mean, I can put it back out for bid, but it, it's not.
To me, it's smart what you do and.
Well, it's not out for bid every year, like, if you guys want me to get bids, I can do that, but it's not, it's a renewal, it's, I can't put anything out for bid.
But it's pretty easy for them to quote apples to apples.
It's not.
What?
Not when you're dealing with a community. There's only been two insurance companies that ever submitted bids and the one was out of Sterling and.
I don't think, I don't think Farm Bureau's ever submitted a bid.
And it all has to do with who, who will insure municipalities.
The power plant is actually one of the biggest.
It's always gonna be EMC.
Yeah.
But I don't know if every insurance company deals with EMC.
And maybe not. I'd just like to be local and check with it, give him an opportunity. He contributes to the city too, and to the community. I just think it's the right thing to do, it don't cost us anything.
Probably a little bit late to do that now, I'd say.
It's our first fro- full year with him. We need to stick with him and in a year from now, if we wanna talk about it, we can. But it's our, it's our first full year with him, we need to stay with him. If we can talk about it next year. I mean, he's not on, but it's our first full year.
So do I have a motion to approve that?
Make a motion to approve our renewal, our insurance renewal in the amount of ninety-one thousand nine hundred. Make a motion to approve our renewal, our insurance renewal, in the amount of ninety-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Second. Motion in a second, any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed, motion carries. So are we doing? We got four evaluations?
You can do four in ten minutes.
Ten minutes, you said ten minutes, all of them?
Yeah.
For all four evaluations?
Yeah.
They do fifteen.
Yeah, there's no way we can do it ten, we do fifteen.
Amend it for fifteen.
So I'd entertain a motion for a fifteen-minute executive session to discuss employee evaluations.
So move second.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Yeah, all of us, and we'll start with the one Tori used to be in on. Yeah, I guess. If you want to.
Yeah, I can, Alan's holding too, so.
For all of us, to resume at eight oh six. Call the meeting back to order?
Make a motion to get Alan Moore race to be at seventeen dollars and thirty-four cents. For his evaluation.
Second. Got a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Make a motion to give Alan Adams, uh, to be at twenty-six dollars per his evaluation.
So move, or second. Got a motion in a second, any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Make a motion to give Jeff Williamson to be at twenty-eight dollars and five cents for his evaluation.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. It looks like we have another ten-minute executive session?
It's for a part-time, right? A lower seasonal.
You guys give them five? Five-minute executive session to discuss potential hire to include everyone at the table?
Yes.
Is that it? Any males?
No.
Everybody at the table? Got a motion in a second, all in favor? Motion carries to resume at eight thirteen. Call the meeting back to order?
I hope I'm saying it right, uh, is it Leslie? Is that Leslie?
Leslie Missler?
Yeah. I wanna hire Leslie Missler, um, at fifteen dollars an hour, part-time.
Got a motion?
In Craig Wiegel.
We don't know yet on that, well, I mean, I'll make a motion for this one.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Make a motion to hire, uh, Craig Wiegel at fifteen dollars an hour, part-time.
Motion in a second, any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to add a ten-minute executive session for employee performance to include counsel and clerk, attorney.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second? All in favor? Motion carries. We will have a ten-minute executive session to discuss, what'd you say? Employee performance, to include everyone at the table, to resume at eight twenty-six.
That's just changed.
Call this meeting back to order? With no further business, I guess I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
A motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Meeting's...